Good evening, welcome to the Little Falls School Board Meeting. This is February fourteenth. Happy Valentine's Day. This is our business meeting for this month. I'm calling the meeting to order, starting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand and join us. Thank you. Our district mission statement states Little Falls Community Schools promotes personal and academic excellence in a collaborative, safe, and engaging environment. At this time, I would ask for a motion and a second to the approval of the agenda as printed.
So moved.
Thank you Doug, a second. We have a motion and a second on the floor for the approval of the agenda. Are there any comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none, all those with favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We'll now go into our presentations. Stacy, are you first? This is Stacy Gold. She's going to speak to us about the summer twenty-two childcare and the fall twenty-two, twenty-three preschool and childcare offerings we have.
Well, that was good to be reminded about what I was talking about. One of those pieces. Thank you. So, as you know, I like to have a dialogue. That's, that's usually how I operate best anyway, but I do want to start. I had a conversation with someone today and it just reminded me about how very, very thankful I am for the board's support for early childhood. I know that not everybody in my position gets as much support or no fight in, in my role. And so I just want to really acknowledge that and tell you how much I appreciate your support for our youngest learners. Thank you for that. It is really important those first five years. And as you know, and have heard me before, how much I love what I do. So, thank you for that. Um, we can talk briefly about summer. That was the one piece that I had forgotten about, so forgive me. But we were very fortunate last year to get some monies from the state to operate a summer care program. And with that, there were some stipulations. The amount of hours, the, the type of licensure for the teacher, it had to be instructional. We met all of those needs last summer. So, we have money that can roll over and I can use that again for this summer. And so we will be offering five days a week childcare for children that have graduated from our preschool program that are going into kindergarten. So our priority will be those children. And Shelley and I have worked closely on making sure that we'll market it well, but that we use the, the dollars in the correct way. So Shelley and I are working on that. Looking ahead to next fall, and this is where my focus was for our conversation today. And I threw something together for a, just a visual, because that's how I, I process things best. So if you see our two green pieces, what we're going to be offering for four and five-year-olds next year is five half-days of school in the, in the morning or the afternoon. But what we have realized in keeping our pulse in the community is that full day is needed because of our lack of childcare in our county. And so what we're proposing is that we'll have the half-day preschool with the wrapped around care. And then you will see the tuition here in the big purple. And over on the far right in my little writing there, it's just telling you that we went down a dollar twenty a month with our three, with our two half-days. We're going up five twenty for three half-days and up eighteen fifty for five half-days. Now, we haven't increased fees in a period of time. Yes, it's been a period of time. And then if you take a peek at this, when I presented to all of you in the fall, I did a comparison to the local school districts and how much things were costing in comparison. I really believe, working closely with Shelley, the, the increase that we're looking at is not going to put us out of the ballpark anywhere. And then always remember, we have our scholarships and sliding fees for all families. No family is ever turned away because of, of tuition or, or money not being able to spend. So, and just so you would know as well, what you're looking at for a price for preschool plus full care, for a child that's four or five years old, can be cared for next year for a hundred and twenty-five dollars a week. And I changed my wording, and that was a marketing idea, because daycare families think about things in a weekly manner. You know, Doug's saying, yep, yep, I've been there, didn't I? Yep. And so we're looking at making that comparison. So parents are looking at, oh, I can get full care for a hundred and twenty-five dollars a week. Now, if you look at some websites on the internet, that is significantly less than what the median range is in Morrison County. It's, talking to the people I work with in my advisory board, we're, we're right in there. So we feel really good about that price range.
Question. Yeah. So, these rates that you have listed over here?
Yeah.
Are those based on kind of the comparisons in the area? We're making some changes? Or is this, do you know, like staffing and how we need to staff for this type of scheduling?
So why did I increase or change?
Yeah, why, what was the purpose between down for the half-days and up for the others? Like, what, yeah, just this reason?
So, um, it averages out, I just did the math and it's a great question. It's three dollars an hour is what it comes out to be at the end of the school year. It, that, what I did is I have a spreadsheet that I, I used to calculate all of it. And it was the ending up being eight dollars a time. And so then, except for then that math doesn't work out for the five half-days, so just. So, uh, yes.
Because we do want to be competitive with more.
Area schools. And you also know that last year I had to dip into my fund balance. And so I don't want to continue that practice. I was really enjoying watching that grow, grow or stay the same. And, and so last year I needed to dip into that. So, I think that we're timing, we're due for an increase. The increase doesn't put us up so high that we're out of the range. So, does that answer it?
On, on your, um, figures, the parents don't pay extra for food, correct? This is all included. So are we able to use monies from the lunch programs that we have been for that?
Do we anticipate that all lunches are free next year as well?
Yes.
Yes? Okay, so. Okay. So our children would participate in the breakfast as a lunch as well. And we, we are very good at getting our free lunch forms for our early childhood. So that's just part of our practice.
That's great, because we have issues with the older ones.
So what I'm coming to for is to answer any questions you might have, but also just to get your permission that these fees look appropriate and okay with you.
The funds you receive from the state are only for summer funds, right? They're not reflected in this, these extra funds you first talked about. Is that correct?
Can you ask me that question again in a different way?
So, um, when you first talked about the, the summer childcare or whatever, and I believe you had, last summer you had received some funds.
Correct.
And then you said there were some extra ones or whatever. Are those reflected in this or that is totally separate?
That will be totally separate. Yep. That will, that will run first to the August.
Okay, so whatever. Okay.
Are those funds available again this year then?
No, that was, that was.
Just a one shot.
Yes, yep. And they have to be used up before August thirty-first or August first, other two firsts, thirty-first of twenty-two.
Your summer, um, project, your summer childcare program, is that just one location or are we able to put it in room response?
I have requested that it be at my space.
Okay.
The reason why is that it's set and ready for that age child.
Okay.
I don't believe that that is always what's easiest for families. And so.
But it's an option for them.
It is an option, and I think that the children are better cared for in my sight because of the, we're set for it already.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Stacy? Then we need to have a motion to approve the tuition rates.
So moved.
Okay, thank you Doug, in a second.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve the tuition rates that Stacy has provided for us. Is there any other questions, comments, or concerns for Stacy? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving this signify by saying aye. Go for it. Thank you Stacy. Our next presentation is dealing with the American Indian Education Plan of Aid. Chris, Chris Grams will be visiting with us about that.
Thank you. And then, based on Michelle's availability.
I'm just checking right now to see where she's at, so.
You know, if you could.
And then we can just go on with.
And then she also said that's fine. So, you know, because I don't know, she might be in the.
Two minutes.
Okay, perfect. Well, then let's wait.
Okay, we'll just wait then. Then while we're waiting for that, Julie, do we have any public comments tonight? Do we have any public comments? No, okay. And then I also next need a motion for the consent agenda that covers the personnel, the approval of the prior minute, meeting minutes, and the approval of the financial transactions we were all given.
Madam Chair, so moved.
Thank you Brad. We have a motion, now a second.
Second.
Thank you Mark. We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda with those three items on it. Are there any questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you. That is all passed then. Mark, you want to go into the resolution for the acceptance of gifts?
Sure. Mark Kirby introduced the following resolution and moves this adoption. Whereas the following have generously offered to donate to Little Falls Community Schools. Therefore, be it resolved by Little Falls Community School Board of Education to gratefully accept the gifts. There were five anonymous donations that totaled one thousand seven hundred dollars. And they all went to the Limburg Social Work Fund. Chris Willis pedal for Public Schools donation of two hundred dollars. Curtis Olson, VFW Post nine zero seven three donation of one thousand five hundred dollars to the Clay Target League. Little Falls Sportsman Club donation two hundred dollars to Community Service for Firearms Safety. Pine Country Bank donation five hundred dollars to the Community High School for Scholarship Fund. Initiative Foundation donation of the following grants to Little Falls Community School. Twenty-four thousand Beverly M. Pansky Johnson Scholarship. Three thousand three hundred dollars Little Falls Scholarship Fund. Five hundred dollars Nancy Clyde Fergie Memorial Scholarship. Five thousand dollars Mary Jean Tillman Healthcare Scholarship. Seven hundred and fifty dollars to Silver Linings Jeff Schilling Memorial Scholarship. Flyers Athletic Boosters donation of ten thousand dollars for a cross, cross-country groomer. Jordan Hansel Insurance and Financial Services donation of one thousand dollars for the Jordan Hansel State Farm Scholarship. Anita and Gary LeBlanc donation of five hundred dollars for the Brigadier General Gary LeBlanc Leadership Scholarship. AMG National Trust donation of two hundred nine thousand dollars, nine hundred ninety-two and seventy-six cents for the Gordon Larson Scholarships. Faith Lutheran Church donation of five hundred dollars to the Care Closet. Edmentum donation of five hundred dollars Target Gift Card for the Community High School. Laura and Ralph Anderson donation of five hundred dollars for the Ralph Anderson Scholarship for Choral Music. Design Electronics donation of one hundred dollars to Flyer Robotics. This motion, and I guess I'm looking for a second.
A second.
Second from Sharon. Roll call, Brad.
Yes.
Doug.
Yes.
Myself, yes. Sharon.
Yes.
Julie.
Yes.
Kelsey.
Yes.
Approved.
Thank you. Reports from board members, Doug?
Um, I do have just one thing. I guess I'd like to maybe get some clarification or just hear something while I've been receiving some feedback about, um, I think it was this past week about some educators or teachers going to North Carolina. If, and if I'm wrong, tell me, but about going to, is it a modern teacher conference? I think it was. And I guess I, the concern I'm hearing or what I've heard is that if we're talking about a, a difficulty in getting substitutes in the middle of a pandemic, yet we're sending educators or teachers to a conference. I think the optics doesn't look great on that, regardless of, you know, right, wrong, or indifferent. So, I guess I'm just more, I, I'm reporting what I've heard, but I guess I'd also like to hear a little bit about the, I mean, just kind of the thought process behind it as well, so. Well, I suppose I, I should be the one to talk about it. Okay, since I'm the guilty party. Okay. And what you're saying doesn't surprise me because I've heard it. I've heard it all. And of course, if any one has ever gone to a conference, you have to register months in advance. You have to get airline tickets months in advance. You have to get hotel reservations months in advance. They all come with or without cancellation dates. We were poised to not go as we solidified subs across the district for the people that were going. It was determined by me that we were okay to go. When we were gone for those three days, the sub rates were no different, no greater, no less than what they were beforehand. So it was three, it was. It was three days. Okay. Okay, it was three days. So it was a Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. Okay. If, uh, if it had been, um, for example, on January twenty-fourth, when we had a hundred and thirty-seven cases in the district with sixteen staff members out due to COVID, we would not have done. But the fact that it was February seventh, eighth, and ninth, when our numbers had dipped down into forty-fives and we were less than three or four staff out with COVID, I made the determination based off the money that we had put up to go to this conference that we had gone to in the past to continue to go. Part of our responsibility and part of Esser Dollars is for professional development. This is professional development.
That answer your question?
I, you know, it does.
Okay. And it was only two school days then.
Right.
Three so. Well, you said Sunday.
Sunday, Monday, Tuesday.
Always.
Yeah. Three school days. Yep.
Thank you. Anything else, Doug?
Anything else?
No, but it's good that we all have the information if somebody else is asked about it too.
Well, yeah, I mean, I, I just, again, what I've, I've heard it, but I also understand too the optics of it as well. So I also heard that I was going to cancel the school and go into distance learning because of the conference. Oh, I guess. So, yeah, I guess. So, yeah, well, yeah, funny how that didn't happen either. So that I heard actually from the union a month before the, the trip was proposed. Or the month, I shouldn't say.
The month.
Because the, the, the trip was finalized, um, the, the initial, uh, people were, were guaranteed their spots in September. So this isn't something that we just put together in the last minute. This was something that was done pointedly and in full transparency. You don't do something like this with, with the sixteen teachers we took for this. You don't do that quietly in a school district. But how it can be twisted into what it was twisted into just infuriates me, to be perfectly honest with you. And I'm not, I'm not upset with you Doug for bringing it up. No, I'm upset with the situation because here we go, again, I sit in my office, I'm there every dang day. If people have a concern or a question, they can ask me those questions. But the fact of the matter is, this had already been run through the union and they were fully supportive of this.
Thank you Steve. Brad, any news from out west?
Yeah, but you won't want to hear it. We've had four, four days in the eighties, so I know that you've been suffering there, so I won't bring that up.
Okay. Just pack some of it up when you come back, you know, next month.
I want all the snow melted and temperatures high when I get there.
Okay, as soon as you bring the heat back. Okay, Mark?
Nothing to report.
Julie, Kelsey.
I don't think I have any either.
Okay, and I haven't heard yet, I don't know if Steve had how the, if they reached the goal this weekend for the world record for.
They did.
Ice Festival.
They got it to.
Alterate.
Yep.
I know they had, but I know they had posted that you were still accepting donations, trying to.
Yeah, we haven't gotten the final one yet. But again, another spectacular philanthropic effort by the, by this rolling family.
Yeah, and on such a nice day.
Yes.
Weekend. Okay, Steve, could one more into your report?
Sure. Couple of things to report. We have started to meet concerning summer school. As we know, the district through the Esser Funds was granted dollars to help two main areas, learning loss and, and enrichment opportunities for, for students. We've met with the elementary principals to be, to begin that process. It is our goal to have a, a much more unified summer school situation than we had last year, which came about very quickly because the money was given to us very late and we were really scrambling. And so we have some deadlines that are set. We've been through the webinars from MDE. We have a pretty good idea of the way that we'll do it. We're, uh, we will announce dates by the end of February and begin securing staff both certified and non-certified to work at the summer school programs, which we hope to run in all three elementary schools, all at the same weeks. So we have some consistency to provide transportation, mental health and, and social supports as well as food throughout the course of the, the eighth and noon, which is what we're shooting for. Coordinating with some local businesses and entities as well as community services to make sure that we can maximize kids' participation in, in both summer school and recreation as well, as we, as we will hopefully look for a, a normal summer. We've had to postpone twice the meeting with the little school and high school. That is again set for next week, so we'll, we'll get more clarification. And I'll have a, on the full written report for you in the near future and then present to you again at the, at the March Board meeting for that.
How's the staff engagement, you think, this year for that? Really burning out.
Yeah, MDE and, and they were pretty blunt in their webinar, said, um, we fully anticipate that you will, you will struggle. And they reported that they, schools throughout the state spent seventy percent less than what they thought they would last year on summer school. And it simply has to do with staffing, the inability to get staff. So, um, we're, we, we've talked about that. You know, we're, we've been blessed through the work of, um, the Human Resources Department to try, try and fill as many gaps as we possibly can with, with recent college graduates, with folks that have bachelor's degrees but not a teaching license. And we're hopeful that a number of those fresh out of college wannabe teachers will work at the summer school for us as well. So, uh, you know, we're going to really try everything we can to get people there. We're going to designate, especially at the elementary. We're going to go through our child study program and, and use, and let the data really focus us in on the kids that we're going to specifically go after to get to summer school and of course, open it up to everybody. But we really want to focus on those kids because we do want to attack learning loss in our school, summer school program this year. So, um, we're hopeful, uh, you know, we're, the, the plan is to have it later in the summer. And, and for those staff members that are tired and a little need a break. Hopefully June and, and summer July will allow that. And they'll, they'll be fired up again to, to come back and, and meet with the kids that, that really need their presence. Good question, thank you. Personnel is going to be our huge challenge for next year. There's, there's no doubt about it. And whether it's, it's, it's certified staff, non-certified staff, or, or support staff, specialty staff to help meet the needs that our children so desperately show is going to be a challenge. We all know that we're in a mental health crisis. The problem is there aren't enough mental health providers to help us stem the crisis. Uh, and so, you know, it's kind of like winning a lottery when you get someone to, to sign. Erin and I have done more dances because we've signed people, get them to come and, and work for us than we ever have before. It, it's a challenge. And so I expect the Personnel Committee, because we're busy this spring because we'll, we'll probably have to get somewhat creative. We're, we're certainly going to have to invest the Esser Dollars. And again, Esser was meant specifically for, uh, lowering class sizes and helping students go after the, the things that, that COVID caused them, mental health being another part of that. And, and, uh, you know, the, the challenge of investing those dollars in bodies by trying to make sure that that doesn't become a permanent investment when the dollars run out. Trying to find the balance there is, is the challenge. And, and we really expect the, the personnel conundrum to really be a challenge this year. And it probably seems a little maybe inappropriate, but I think I'll recognize Erin at this point at the aforementioned Charlotte Conference as winning the District Leader Change Management of the Year National Award. So Erin, the work that you've done in, 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 in personalizing the, the necessity of the education, not only for our students but for our staff, creating one-stop shops for our staff to, to grow themselves professionally and to have our students continue to grow within their academic day is, is the main reason why you vested many people from around this country and earned the District Change Management Leader of the Year. Thank you.
Congratulations. And I meant a little bit more, have peers with you to see that accepted and I know true. Thank you. Next is the note, there is no older unfinished business. We are going to go back up to the presentation with Chris and Michelle on the American Indian Education. And then we will go into the new business, which just happens to be a resolution. So good timing that way.
I'll even let you have the left hand, Jared.
You've heard his questions.
Of course, that'd be great. And thank you to Julie, who's got copies of the plan and, or of the presentation for all of you to view. So, if you haven't had a chance to glance through it yet, I think it's really appropriate that we start with a land acknowledgement that was crafted. I don't know how familiar any of you are with land acknowledgements, but, um, in support of all of the indigenous communities, this has become, I think, part of procedure on, on, on lambs. And I've been at many, many events where this is a part of the process. And so I'd ask, just take a moment to read that. Thank you. And really, it's just done as a, um, an additional form of a meeting opening. Thank you, and really, it's just done as a um, an additional form of a meeting opening. Uh somewhat similar for a pledge of allegiance, and then we have this um honoring the very significant um history of our land. And so, um are you running that for people over there? Can I run it? No, you can run it. I did hate going next slide please, but next slide please. Um I don't know how familiar this group is with um the American Indian education legislation through the state of Minnesota. Um I can tell you that as long as I've been back in the Little Falls District, um we have not had an active plan. And um it became a, a goal to, to see this brought to fruition and it just so happened that our demographic um numbers shifted as well as our ability to capture those numbers shifted, starting in about twenty twenty. And so um that was the time that the Minnesota Department of Ed said they wanted all people to designate their racial and ethnic demographic information for registrations and based on uh local and federal race categories. And so at about that time, um I started working
Thanks.
in no small part to Julie Mitchell, who does the Mars and and rolling up that data um to try to capture these, these numbers. And uh this is just information I shared for me with you here from the Minnesota Department of Education. And so the link on the bottom is the, the link to the page for a more description about what what that all encompasses and then another link specifically to the aid calculation for that. Um but I think when you take a look at that, um the state of Minnesota really makes it, it pretty clear that those are high values for them and expects public school districts who serve American Indian students and families to honor those values. And that's what the American Indian education plan is about. So um next slide. And Michelle, you know, you can chime in whenever you want. If you don't, you know, I'll just roll right over and I don't mean that. Um I'm not gonna read all of this to you because you do have it, but essentially um twenty was that magic number. Uh the state of Minnesota had a strange, which I'm sure they do it in other places too, but they had a strange um kind of a tiered system where if you had more than ten peo-, uh more than ten students um who are American Indian identified, but fewer than twenty, you still had to have an American Indian parent advisory committee and report compliance, but there was no funding to go with that. So truthfully, I made some efforts to try to generate something just for that. Never really got a lot of, of um, you know, takers on that. And then low and behold, after twenty twenty, our numbers came up over the magic mark of twenty and I put out some requests and I got some wonderful volunteers to help with this parent advisory committee work. And Michelle um and Kara Schilling, a district employee, um who also has a child who is American Indian in part, the three of us kind of took it in this direction. And so you can see that the requirements are that uh if you have twenty or more American Indian students, you have to have an American Indian education plan and that you have to have an advisory of which Michelle is part and um that we have to complete annual compliance. So the annual compliance is essentially what Michelle will present to you after um after we're done with our presentation and then it just a roster of those members of the American.
Chris, the, the students themselves, do they have to have a certain percentage?
That's a great question and they do not. Um in, in the state of Minnesota, for American Indian education, it is how you identify. There is no um travel, travel certification required, nothing. Um there is a stipulation where if you want to also match several dollars, I believe, and that's when you have higher volumes of students, you can do that. But really, this is if you are in part or in full um American Indian, you just need to check the box on our form in um registration and we will count you that way. And I'll get into that just a bit more here. So Mark. Um so uh in the spirit of transparency, uh when you talk about aid, uh we receive twenty-one thousand dollars roughly from the state of Minnesota or we will be receiving that. We were granted that in aid based on numbers um from the year twenty twenty. Um and so they're always like a year behind. And um they are identified at the various uh schools that you'll see here. But I think that most of you, if you, if you've spent time in the schools, you go, that number seems a little low based on where we live and who our families are and the populations we serve. And so what we discovered, and we were not alone, other school districts in the state of Minnesota um and their student information systems were having some of the same issues. Um that's pulling, that number is just pulling off of like the federal race identifier. So people who say, I am a hundred percent American Indian, the state of Minnesota's intention though is if you are all or in part. And so now um Julie and I are going through as we speak, next week is um on our agenda, we're gonna be appealing the account that they pull from our Mars numbers and the, the count for next year is gonna look more like fifty. And um so, because right now, if you took the numbers that they have, it's at twenty-four. And that's because they're only taking those people who have identified as full American Indian. But if you look at any mixed race with any American Indian or American Indian in full, our, our number is closer to fifty. And so aid is based on a twenty thousand dollar base for when you have twenty students and then an additional three hundred and fifty-eight dollars. Um you have to have a plan for that aid. You have to enact the plan and the American Indian parent advisory committee has to vote and concur that you are enacting that plan in due diligence. And so that's what this is about a little bit. Um and you just received notice that we had um that plan approved probably in, I don't know, Michelle, was that like December or something? Did we hear? I, it was, it wasn't that long ago, maybe November, December? Yeah, so we're just in the infancy of actually spending those dollars and enacting that plan. Um so as I said, Michelle, Kara Schilling and myself really have been the active members. However, one of the best things to come out of this is um one of the goals that I had for this plan was to have outreach to every parent who had identified as American Indian and say, hey, you need to know about our plans and this could be really good things for your student and here's why. And although I really tried to speak to them all over the phone, I couldn't reach everyone, but so many of the conversations were awesome. So like the first, I don't know, four names on there, one, two, three, yeah, four names are parents. And you'll see a school readiness, S R, school readiness parent, a kindergarten parent, an, an early childhood, grade two, grade three, uh grade three and younger. So we've got a lot of young families who really, when I explain that, the plan to them and the values of the plan, we're all on board and want to serve on this advisory committee. I have to tell you, it's hard when they have littles to make it to stuff like this, but many of them were like, I wanna help, let us know how we help. So right now, our biggest, I guess, we're just a couple problems, hopefully all get together every time that works for everybody. So. Also, I think something really exciting, our district media specialist, and you'll see here in a while why some of these people are making sense on the plan. Uh Jill Siler, when I explained the plan to her, she's all on board, she's super excited. She manages what students read um and uh really has some um interest in helping make sure that our American Indian students are seeing themselves reflected in the books and are reading books about American Indian history, accurately represented and books written by and about American Indians. Uh Sandy Gangstad, uh give her great props. She was gonna be here tonight too, but they have um conferences over at Lindbergh, same with um Jill. She often works with our multi-language learners, um but in previous districts has also assisted in working with um the American Indian student population. And so when I showed her some of the numbers in Lindbergh, um we thought, wow, would that be a great fit if she could start doing some one-on-one? And so starting like two weeks ago, she's been pulling them and spending some time reading some books, doing some projects. And if you give me a minute, I just have to read because she couldn't be here. She shared this little tidbit um that I just wanna share. And I think I just stuttered on the password, so hang on. Yeah.
While you're pulling this.
Yes, this is really exciting that you've got so many people on board.
Are you super impressed?
And like especially those younger, I get it is, I'm one of those parents that have little kiddos.
Yeah.
It's hard, so great.
Yeah.
Great effort from on your behalf.
You know, thank you. I think I ran to Steve and I probably talked to Michelle and her every time I got in. Because they are all in their own way, very excited to serve. It's just a matter of how can we find that?
Yeah.
Um so um. Just this week, she said, um. Okay, here's something fun that came up from last week's session. I think she's been with most of the children twice. And she said, we learned how to count ten in Ojibwe and started, I talked about sharing the words we used with their grownups. So taking this at learning home, right, to see if they had or if they learned the same since there are different dialects. She said, then I said I'd have a small prize if they wanted to accept the challenge of being able to say the numbers on their own. And she said, a couple of students were already pretty familiar with one to ten, so they're practicing counting to twenty. She has met with these children twice and some of them are super excited about learning another language. It's pretty amazing. So. And then most recently, Laura DeShane, um I shared this same information I'm sharing with you with our leaders um about a month ago and then asked the principals to share it out and the school social worker called me today and she said, can I please be on this committee? This is so important. And um just here, I talked to parents, we're like, where was this when I was a kid? So, yeah. Um if next slide. The plan, basically the state of Minnesota said, tell us how you're gonna spend these dollars and it's in these five areas. One is to support post-secondary preparation, one is to support academic achievement, um a third to make curriculum relevant to the needs, interests and heritage of our American Indian pupils, the fourth to provide positive reinforcement of self-image of American Indian pupils, the fifth to develop intercultural awareness among pupils, parents and staff. And then the sixth is kind of, you know, jargon, but it's supplement, not the plan. It means this can't be used to spend dollars on things that the district should be buying anyway. This is over and above just for the mission of plan. So um Mark, and I'll just tell you a little bit and Michelle, here's where if you want to. Um if you want to. Um I put that, I talking to all the families under this one because you had to put it somewhere else, but um and this one, oh whoops, sorry, area one, I think maybe I missed it. Okay, there you go. Do you wanna say, I do wanna talk through any of these or not?
No, no, okay.
What about that scary? Okay, um this one, I thought, I, I nodded at you for this because I think this was one of your ideas as well. Just and that's been really great to just having the parents and and teachers brainstorm, what could we do under here? Okay, in terms of supporting post-secondary, um I think Michelle said, we should have people come in, like people like me and other people who do other jobs and let children see themselves and young adults see themselves um and see other American Indian adults and the various roles they play in their communities. And um so that's on our list. Um the uh, the plan, aid itself, this is one they tell you. You can use this to pay for A C D for your American Indian students. Um college application fees, if they wanna go visit colleges, we can support that through the American Indian education aid. And because we're always working off of like the prior numbers, you know, we kind of have to keep an eye out and go, okay, what tenth graders will get paid for them and you know, how many years, but um we really are mindful about that, we should be able to implement that. We should be able to let kids start seeing some opportunities for themselves. Um you've heard of some or other programs like Avid, um Avid and this go hand in hand. Avid should be representative of our rest of our body and it should also, they work to support traditionally underrepresented communities. And so it's like, let's make sure we have some of our American Indian and, or American Indian students in our Avid programs. And then also um pointing to making sure that these students have equal access to our rigorous coursework so that we're seeing our American Indian students in our college and schools classes and other rigorous courses as well. And um then also uh many of our state colleges offer free reduced tuition to some of the Minnesota schools. And so that's letting our guidance counselor know when she's meeting with students who would be eligible for that, that they know about it. So some of these things are really just, someone has to monitor. And right now, that someone is me and then I mean on others as we did. So, Mark, sorry. Um support the academic achievements of our American Indian students. There's so much, there's so much that goes into here. So I basically said, this is where we're communicating with families because I wanted to know from families that if I'm gonna engage your child in something over and above or a, additional or whatever that you, I have your permission. So that's why I wanted to reach out as well, let them all know. Um I really just wanna serve as one other layer of support and um monitor for their academic progress. So I'll be able to keep an eye, the state of Minnesota runs a report on um L C A histories, those sorts of things. I can check grade progress. I can just be one other layer of support to offer the families and the teachers if needed. And then making sure that our families really know what supports already exists for all students, like our boosters um on Tuesdays and Thursdays, which I kind of helped, I think in mind of all this COVID stuff, boosters, I mean, that's not the best name anymore, but okay. And, and our, our academic support time at the school and our win time at the middle school and our title nights at our elementary schools, these are all opportunities for all students and families. But I wanna make sure that our American Indian students and families know about them. And then if there are barriers to participating in those things, what are they? And hopefully help reduce those. Um this is huge. This is a huge one and this is gonna be a probably a multi-year endeavor. But it's making sure, like I said, that our media centers or digital, access to digital materials um and certainly access to our curriculum materials um are completely historically accurate, showing doors and windows and mirrors and, you know, mirror, seeing so that children can see themselves. Um but also that children can see, we're not like them and have that be an accurate representation, what we read. And so that's um part of this work. Um Jill Siler has been gracious enough to run a, an inventory of all of the books in our um system and we'll look at, is it contemporary in terms of American education or American Indian representation? Is it sufficient, those sorts of things? And then can we help make sure that it gets that direction? Um I kind of wanted to focus mostly on the elementaries this year, but that worked all kind of overlaps. And then super excited, um that's where talking to Jill, she's like, I wanna help, let me know what I can do. Um teacher libraries, like a lot of times our elementary classrooms have, you know, book boxes and things that they grab and they might not always be representative or thorough. And so um we're gonna be looking at a way to um inventory teacher libraries. And um if there are needs there, um American Indian education funding can help supplement some of those classroom libraries. So that should be a nice thing too. Um. Promote positive reinforcement. To me, this just says, let's get to know some of those cultural elements and, and celebrate them and learn more about them and allow you to engage with those during like course of your school or extracurricular or clubs or things of that nature. These are some of the ideas that we've talked about. Um so like when Sandy said she's meeting with students, she said, oh, can we do some crafts maybe related to a book that we read or something? Or um the Minnesota Historical Society uh sells um shoulder bakes that replicate the needlework of um some of the Ojibwe people in the area. So you can buy that and the kids can do that as craft, learn about that as a historically significant part of their heritage. Um we wanna maybe pull in some of our um native community members who can come in and speak during a speaker series, like our win time in our element, or in our middle school and talk either about careers or about things that are culturally significant. Um and then hoping to go uh to the Lulax Indian uh Museum and Trading Post with the families and uh students who might be interested if we can get that arranged for the spring. That was a little iffy based on COVID stuff. So these are just ideas. So what I'm listing here are just some of the things that we wrote into the plan the first year, saying this is how we might spend these dollars. The thing with the aid with um state of Minnesota is if you don't spend it, it goes back. Um and if we need to move categories, we're allowed to do that too, just need to notify them as that happens. Um. Mark is hearing my, um, thank you. Um and then intercultural awareness, to me, this is probably one of the biggest ones too. It's like, I, even though I don't have any American Indian heritage, I need to learn, I want to learn more about it. So how can we and how can I see value in my classmates and in my coworkers and their histories? And that's what this points to. So again, some of our win sessions are, I think about all the curricular connections, like when we do our planning and planting the school garden. Three Sisters planting, I don't know how many you know about it, but it's like you do the corn and then you do the beans that can climb off the corn and then you do the squash underneath and they all, they kind of produce up different kinds of the earth. and then you do the squash underneath and they all, they kind of group set different kinds of the yards of cooperative planting that that's been used. And could we introduce that in that class? Just as another thing of knowing. Um, and then, Michelle, do you wanna say something about this one? About the hole in the day stuff?
Oh.
Would you?
Yeah, I can take that one, so. Well, I won't go into huge detail. Chief Hole in the Day is perhaps the one Ojibwe chief that lived in the area. And um, obviously has some mythical kind of background in this local area. And so knowing that, that that's out there, I said, you know, it'd be a really good idea if we embrace that, if we embraced this history because it's local. Um, and about the same time that this happened, I always drive by um, right outside the IWCO, there used to be a big sign that has faded and warped and no longer is, is, it is no longer there, to be honest with you, it wasn't even hardly legible on the last couple of years. And so I said, you know, it'd be really fun for us to embrace this history. Um, there is a woman at the Morrison County Historical Society that I intend to be in touch with. Talked to her ever so briefly um, once, but plan to have further conversation about this. Who's actually done research on Chief Hole in the Day and um, and I think it would be really fun for us to have a, we kinda talked about a in informational night about it and then almost like a, what was it?
Service project of sorts or?
Well, the service project, yes, but I was talking about that night, where we have different members that can ask questions, answer questions and stuff. But then our service project for what we thought we could do with our group is to reproduce that sign um, as in, in a way to honor Chief Hole in the Day. Um, so anyway, that's, that was kind of, why not, why not grasp hold of his, this historical member of our society?
For sure, for sure. Thank you. And then Mark, um, you don't need to read all of this, it's just basically what I said. Making sure that we don't use this money for anything other than what we've articulated in our plan. And Mark, oh, that's the end. Well, I kinda surprised myself, I was looking by six, I thought by six, okay. So um, this is the Ojibwe word for thank you. If you want to hit enter again, Mark, I think there's one more thing on here. Um, I think it's, its origin is really interesting. Um, it, it came from a mispronunciation of um, a French word or a French word mispronouncing an Ojibwe word. And they were like, okay, Ojibwe were saying, just like, okay, we're done, we're not gonna trade, I mean, you know, like, we're, we're finished. And and they euphemized it to be thank you. And so then now it's become thank you. So now we commonly understand it to be thank you. So, um, and just I think another testimony to the power of just talking about and planning for something and measuring something. Um, we have just gotten approval for this plan and Michelle emailed me and said, Michael Lyons is coming to the Great River Arts. And um, we ran into each other there about a month ago. He's um, he teaches Ojibwe language and um, history at a charter school up north. But he's also a um, a puppeteer and he does a children's podcast as well as an adult podcast on Ojibwe language. And um, I saw one of our little third graders there with her mom and you could tell she knew like the, the puppets and she was familiar with them and um, I just think it's one of those things that maybe had we not made this plan, I wouldn't have known those opportunities. Uh, we wouldn't have put it out there for our school families, maybe that mom and that child would not have gone. And now they went to this and they have something to talk about together, hopefully something to fill pride in. So I'm just, it's really great. I know. Um, Julie, I have a question. Is there a timing for this? Does, does this get read now? This is that?
That's it.
That's in our asking the news. It'll be the next thing.
Michelle said she could read it if you want, but it's length or you can read it if you want. Yeah, talking about the funding that you're getting.
Yeah, always that funding determine, is it by the number of students you have designated?
It's a base of twenty thousand dollars for twenty students and then an additional, I wanna say three hundred and fifty eight per each child over that. And then um, because this is new, we really are just, like, we're just starting to enact the plan. I would be surprised if we are as organized to spend all of that down by the end of this first year. Maybe it was wishful thinking, but um, encouraging to know that we get to reapply for next year and that that count will be higher. And having gone through part of a year planning and maybe getting our parents, you know, figured out how we can all meet together or how we can all best work together to get all this good stuff done.
What is the year, year stop at the end of our school year or does it stop?
I have to submit a new plan by, oh, I wish I knew that answer off the top of my head, Sharon, but there's, um, and then I think I have until. One minute for that, but um, I don't know that it's exactly our calendar year or our school year. I'm not entirely sure. Yeah, it's a different, slightly different deadline because I feel like, yeah, we submitted in October and heard right before Christmas, something like that. So, yeah, thank you for that question. And I just wanna say thank you to everyone who's helped because it's um, it's exciting stuff and we just can't help it.
This isn't a special course offered in school, this is extra.
This is, this is required legislation for Minnesota schools who serve American Indian students and their families. Yep, and so these are, it's not a class.
Right, that's what I was asking, it's not a course.
Nope, however, you know.
So we don't have to have a designated instructor.
Oh, no, no, um, and I think if you get over, I don't know, it's over a hundred or over, I don't know what the count is. You have to have a designated um, liaison to administer your plan. I, at this point. So, yeah, but um, no, the offerings will be, um, like, I think at the elementary school, Sandy Gangstead has tried to grab some of their independent time or whatever, bring them down for the stories or, you know, so it's over and above.
Okay, so moving forward, we're gonna go right into new business and turn it over to Mark for the resolution.
All right, whereas the school board has an American Indian Parent Advisory Committee um, who are eligible for Indian education programs, American Indian language, culture teachers, paraprofessionals, American Indian teachers, American Indian counselors, American Indian adults enrolled in the educational programming, and American Indians representatives from the community. Therefore, resolve that the AIPAC concurs that the school board and district are compliant with Minnesota Statute Section one, two, four, D point seven, eight, and that the school board meeting the needs of the American Indian students. We, the American Indians Parents Advisory Committee, issue a vote of confidence. We attest that the school board are compliant with the Minnesota statute and that the school board and our district are meeting the needs of the American Indian students. And I'll make the motion, Mark Kirby.
Hold a second.
We have a second. Uh, Kelsey?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Doug?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Passes.
That's it, folks. Hey, um, next on our agenda is allegedly legislation, let's try again.
Alleged legislation.
The update that Steve's gonna give us.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Uh, we're, we're in the week two. Uh, we actually completed week two of the legislature. And uh, things are happening at their normal early frenetic pace. Um, nothing gets settled until it absolutely has to. Um, but there's a lot of postures going on and, and uh, you know, one would assume that a seven point seven billion dollar surplus would be good news and I'm not sure that it actually is. Because it's only furthering the uh, the, the fighting that's going on. And uh, my, my biggest fear is one that I always have when it's legislative time is that public education gets drove through the blood. Um, and I think you'll see that happen, uh, you know, some of it intentional, some of it unintentional. Um, but uh, I, I'm not looking forward to the next three months, uh, up and through May. I, I, a big defender of public education and this is always a sad time for me. Um, because we, we really, we really have to defend ourselves and it's not, just not right. So and, and the legislative session is kinda starting off that way already, so um, uh, we'll see what happens. Uh, I, I have been in contact, met with our local representatives and uh, to their credit, they have, they've been upfront with us um, about Little Falls Community Schools and the education in Morrison County. And I do sincerely believe they are supporters of what we do here. Um, but, but they, like everyone, uh, have multiple people that they're, that they try to please throughout this whole process. And uh, you know, we'll continue to do what we, we can, understanding that, uh, you know, we don't make the final votes. We just uh, respond when we need to. So you received it today, I sent it out to staff every week, kind of the update. Uh, there, there are a couple of pertinent um, uh, House and Senate bills that are offered up. Probably the most prescient one at this point is the substitute piece, um, which, which may have some, some bipartisan support, not a lot of bipartisan support, but maybe enough to get it through um, to help us with substitutes, um, where we can, uh, you know, we had a case earlier this year where someone let um, their, their education license lapse. Um, and uh, it wasn't intentional, the person wasn't teaching anymore. Um, trying to get that license reinstated was, was a mess, it was a mess. Um, so that was one part of the bill that's out there is to make that easier and then also to uh, to really work with the folks who have some, some college education to, to get them into the classrooms and help us out as much as possible. Uh, those are temporary bills, they are not meant to be permanent. Um, mandates that, that would go on forever, um, so in statute, so we'll see if that happens or not. Uh, Region Five superintendents have a day up there coming uh, in early March, so I will go up uh, and do what I can to represent Little Falls at St. Paul. I'll move right into the COVID update, if that's okay, manager. Um, as I mentioned before, twenty-two days ago, we were at a hundred and thirty-seven cases in the district, we're twenty-six today. Um, our, our student attendance rates, which were, which were in the, in the eighty percent range are, are back up to, to, to normal ninety-four, ninety-five percent each day. So, wow, like we've done two other times previously, we, we've maybe survived the surge and, and are coming back down and, and hopefully for March, April, and May, um, we'll see some normalcy. Amazingly, through all of this, we've been able to have a, a, a full spate of middle school and high school events. We've only had a few canceled, um, some of it because of the weather and a handful because of COVID, but not because of us. Uh, so we're, we're really happy. Our, our fill rates with subs, both certified and non-certified are kinda back to the September and October levels, which still aren't good, but they're better than, than uh, November and, and December and January levels. We went up to Sourcewell on, on uh, Friday and picked up our state allotment of N ninety-five masks, about sixteen hundred of them. Um, so we, I brought them here today, they'll be delivered out to our, to our various schools. Coming up, uh, we have again received more uh, take-home tests. We, we ordered now three separate orders from the state at no cost. The take-home test, probably a total of about five thousand, um, we've gotten um, that, that are in the process of being distributed for, for folks to, to take care of things at home if possible. Uh, certainly the, the ability for our staff, uh, with the CDC changing guidelines to be able to come back on day six, wearing a mask from day six through day ten, um, if they're not feeling symptoms um, was helpful to us, um, getting through the, the toughest times and, and uh, my appreciation goes out to the staff uh, because they really did, uh, they, they, they went above and beyond and, and uh, I know it's not been easy, I know it's been a challenge. Uh, none of us, none of us prepared for this, um, five years ago, we wouldn't have known what to do. Two years of this and folks retired and I'm ready to get back to the way that it used to be and I'm not sure we'll ever get back to the way it used to be, just kind of a new way it needs to be. Uh, and that's the way that we're gonna approach this and hopefully we can stick together and uh, keep, keep working collaboratively to do what our, our charge is, which is to provide the best opportunities for kids and families in Morrison County. Uh, speaking of that, Kelsey and Doug, I agree both, uh, agreed to go up to the Students of Character Award in April. Um, and uh, it, it will be a highlight of your, of your early years in your term. Um, ironically, and you had the Avid report, um, Avid presentation at our last board meeting and you heard Chris uh, and, and Michelle hit on that during their, their AIPAC presentation. Both of our students that are up for the nomination for the Student of Character from Little Falls are, are Avid kits. Um, which if you, as you're sitting there listening to the, to the other stories from other schools, you'll say, that's exactly what the Avid program is all about. Um, and it's, it's, it's pretty cool to see that happen. So, um, I appreciate your continued support of, of things that we're doing here um, to try and impact kids as much as we can. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, sir. I will now entertain a motion to adjourn. So move, thank you, in a second.
Second.
Thank you, I have a motion in a second to adjourn, all those in favor, if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Have a good evening, thank you.